Are they sat back there? Okay, thanks. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call this evening. All board members are present. Next, we will be going into the open forum part of our meeting. And it looks like we have four speakers, so each will be given their three minutes. Just to review, I know I am newer in the chair spot. School boards are not required by Minnesota statute to offer public comment during board meetings. However, it's long been a policy of our district that we welcome stakeholder input. So I thank you all for being here tonight. When we do have school board open forum comments, we do have to use time, place, and manner restrictions so that we can both hear our stakeholders and then get on to the business of the board. The people we have here to speak tonight, for the most part, are about masking. And typically, our policy would not allow open forum comments on items on the agenda. However, because the Safe Learning Plan is frequently been on the agenda, and we do want to hear stakeholder input, I will use board discretion tonight in a lot of those comments. I do want to thank everybody, and for those listening, we have received a lot of emails with input from our community, and we always appreciate that. And for the most part, those emails have been very respectful and very thoughtful, and we appreciate that. Decisions around health and safety of our students, including during the pandemic, are always hard decisions. So we are glad to have your input and know that we deal with this every single day. I am going to ask tonight that our speakers and our audience be respectful, that we don't have cheering or booing or side comments, first of all, during open forum, because that can kind of cause a chilling effect for people who might come and speak on the opposite side of a topic if they're afraid that that will happen. And then I'm going to ask for that same respect during the rest of the meeting, including during the Safe Learning Plan, so that we can get through our business tonight. But this time, because we have a Safe Learning Plan update this evening, and some people have come to speak about masks, I'm going to invite Dr. Stallow if she'd like to make a few comments in preview of what we'll be hearing.
I would love to, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is so much fun to have a full room in the board room this evening, especially to see so many students. As you know, each Thursday, the COVID-19 Incident Command Team comes together, as we have for almost two years now, to review Scott County public health data as well as our local data in our schools. And we did the same thing last Thursday. During Thursday's Incident Command Meeting, we had a robust conversation as an Incident Command Team about masking. And we had several opportunities for people to share data, share insight, and really to begin the process of determining what's a phased plan that allows us to move from masks being required to masks being recommended. We had a subcommittee that met on Friday. We had a team that worked over the weekend up until this morning, when we had another Incident Command Team meeting where we did review the presentation that will be shared this evening. And as I said tonight, I think what you'll see is that, especially looking at this week's data, if we can continue to trend downward, which is the expectation, that we can make some moves to move from required to recommended masking. So I'll be able to share more of that later in the presentation. But for those who are speaking, I wanted you to know in advance that that's work that we began last Thursday, and we'll be able to share the impact and the timeline of that later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we begin, we always read this. Input from student staff, parents, and community members in major decisions can be valuable form of assistance to the board. Open forum is an opportunity to address the board. Individuals who wish to address the board may do so on a topic not on the agenda. And again, I'm using discretion this evening to allow that. At least 10 minutes prior to each meeting, a sign-up sheet will be available at the meeting site for individuals to sign up to address the board. Only those whose names and addresses appear, or names appear on the sign-up sheet at the time of the meeting called to order shall be permitted to address the board. Up to five speakers shall be provided a maximum of three minutes, 15 minutes total, to address the board unless an exception is granted. Speakers will not be allowed to verbally attack, disparage, or potentially defame individual board members, employees, or students, nor may speakers use vulgar or profane language. Also, speakers may be precluded from disclosing personally identifiable private data regarding employees or students. Speakers unwilling to conform to the rules or time constraints may be told the privilege of speaking has ended. Board members shall listen respectfully to issues brought to them by the community, but not engage the individuals during their time. The board shall not deliberate or take action during open forum regarding issues presented. If a follow-up by administration is necessary, the chair shall request that the superintendent follow up on the matter. When the board chair proceeds with the meeting, audience comments are no longer in order. The board members retain the right to call on district administrators for information to assist the board in its deliberations. And it is our expectation that speakers who come forward for open forum, our district staff, students, parents, taxpayers, or residents of our PLSAS community, the reason we ask for public comment is to hear from our local stakeholders. Vice Chair Amy Crosby has time cards with her. You will each have three minutes to address the board. When you have 15 seconds left, she'll hold up a yellow card just so you have a sense of where you're at, and a red card when your time has expired. Okay, at this time, I will ask Joshua Sorovi to come forward. Thanks, Joshua.
Hello. Excuse me. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak again tonight. I appreciate all the work you guys are putting forward to getting the masks off our kids because that's definitely what I think a majority of the people want, is just an optional thing. And that's why I'm here. You can end it tonight. You could literally just say, hey, you can end it tonight. All the other schools around us, almost all of them, are mask optional. And I know you know this, and yeah, you do. Farmington, Jordan, New Prague, Eden Prairie, they're all optional. We could do that. It's pretty easy. You guys could do that, and just let us make our decisions. And honestly, if masks work, why don't they work? I mean, it's pretty obvious that the virus gets through the mask, right? I mean, we have such a case rate that it's pretty obvious the masks don't work. If you just let them, I mean, the kids can go anywhere they want, basically. Church, gas station, we're just talking about this back there. Let the kids be kids. They can go to a football game, and they can not wear a mask. But they come to school, they have to wear a mask. If the parents want the kids to wear a mask, then they let them wear a mask. I mean, it's pretty cut and dry. So that's what I'm asking is for you guys to, let's not wait any longer. Let's just make it optional for all of the parents to pick for their own kids. Again, I spoke the same thing last time and the time before. Under Minnesota Statute 260.03, it states that an unreasonable interference with a child's breathing is child abuse. You are hindering them from breathing. They got to play, and they go to lunch, and they don't have to wear a mask. It's common sense, come on. I mean, we can't just go to a restaurant, have a mask on, take it off, and expect that COVID is not going to get us because we're eating. Come on. It's just common sense. Now, four of you guys are up for reelection this year. So it's probably something to keep in mind. You know, symptoms of mild CO2 exposure may include headaches, drowsiness, shortness of breath, dizziness, visual disturbances, just to name a few. My oldest daughter has asthma, my youngest, I think, has asthma too. She came home four or five times in the last couple of weeks because she has headaches, because she can't breathe with the mask on. Thank you for your time. Please take in consideration.
Thank you, Joshua. Next, Heather Rourke. Thanks, Heather.
Thanks. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm a parent of a junior here at Prior Lake High School. And the reason why I wanted to speak is because I wanted to address the Safe Learning Plan Agenda topic item, specifically masking. So I'm going to share with you guys some research that I did, because, as we all know, research is important. These are cited from the EPA, the United States Environmental Protection Agency. Procedural masks, such as the one that you guys hand out at the front door, have a 38.5 effective efficiency rate. That's less than 50%. Single-layer gaiters that are pretty common as face coverings have a 37.8% efficiency rate. And those lovely homemade cloth masks that everybody has made at home or done as a craft project or supported an Etsy business have a 26.5% efficiency rate. Here's another little fun fact for you. Over-the-counter birth control methods have an 82% efficiency rate. I'm going to let that sink in for a moment. Here's another sad, sad fact, that these masks contribute to the anxiety, depression that all students are starting to suffer through. But hospital admissions for teenage girls ages 15 through 19 for attempted suicide was at 26% increase in the summer of 2020 and has increased over 50% the winter of 2021. The policies you all are enforcing, mandating, and ruling on contribute to this statistic, and shame on you. You are voted into a position to serve this community that entrusts you to do what is right, and you are failing. They say that the road to hell is paved with good intentions, and I truly believe that each and every one of you think that what you're doing is right, but you are very wrong. You stated at a recent board meeting, for us parents to try and understand that you follow the recommendations from the Minnesota Health Department and the CDC. But I ask you, who are you exactly following? Fauci? This is the same man who said that you can contract AIDS by close contact. You have the authority to push back on these insane recommendations, as all the other school districts have done. What is it going to take for you guys to do the right thing? Legal action? There are other schools who have moved away from masks, and even more schools who have actually opened the doors of communication with parents to discuss reevaluating these policies. And I so hope that what we hear tonight moves in that direction. But this board, unfortunately, is not putting these students first. When are you going to start listening to the voices of us parents, teachers, and even students? And when are you going to be less worried about whining and dining legislators for more state and federal money than you are concerned with the mental health of these children? Until then, us parents will not stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Lisa Atkinson. Thanks, Lisa. Hi.
Thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. My topic is also regard to the safe learning planning and masking. As celebrities and sporting fans celebrate at maskless events, including this weekend's Super Bowl, our kids are confused, depressed, and wonder why are they being forced to wear a mask to school every day? It's just not fair. As parents, we are frustrated, as there's really no scientific data to support that mandatory masking is effective at slowing the spread of COVID-19. The CDC's own data finds that kids ages 0 to 20 have a 99.997% survival rate of COVID. It's really not impacting our kids. So what I would like to ask, and I'd like to know, is has the Incident Command Team done a risk-benefit analysis of the mandatory mask policies' impact on kids? Several studies on this topic are starting to emerge, which is why we are hearing about mandatory mask policies being dropped daily in New Jersey and Delaware, are just two recent examples that have been in the news in the last two days. But let me help you explain why. If you look at, one, the benefit of masking. The only benefit of mandatory masking on students is that it might reduce the spread of COVID-19. But there's no true data to support this claim. Even outside of scientific data, common knowledge would tell us that it's not true, as other schools in Minnesota have been mask optional all year long, and they have not had to move to distance learning due to increased COVID cases or lack of teachers. Now, let's evaluate some of the risks. The first, social and emotional health, including increased suicide rates in teens, anxiety, and depression. Speech recognition and hearing and communication resulting in loss of learning. I've been volunteering up at the school, up at the middle school, which has been just wonderful. And when the kids come up and give me their name, I can't hear them. So I can't even imagine what these teachers are going through trying to hear these kids. It's got to be incredibly difficult. Acne and increased dental problems. Language and speech development for students who English is a second language. Again, how do you learn a language if you can't see the face? Emotional recognition. Dizziness and shortness of breath, exhaustion, and increase in other illnesses due to the unsanitary masks, including pneumonia. So given the fact that the kids have a 99.997 survival rate, and there's only one benefit worth the list base, one benefit versus the list of risks to what's causing, to what is hurting our kids, I just have to ask you to, you know, why are we doing this? Vaccines are available for those who are vulnerable. COVID cases are falling. Tests are widely available. It's time to remove the mandatory mask policy and treat this virus as an endemic. Prioritize our kids, and let's let them smile again.
Thank you, Lisa. Joel Myleski? Did I say your last name correctly? Okay.
Bring treats for all of us? Thought maybe you had a bag of treats for us.
Oh, yeah, I do, actually, yes. You say that. Hi, my name's Joel Myleski, as you've heard. I currently have a ninth grader attending Prior Lake School and a sixth grader. I'm here today in regards to the mask mandate still currently in place at our schools. Since the start of the school year, I have watched as our school grounds and parking lots have become trashed with the amount of masks that are in there, just in the parking lots and all over. Last week, I had enough. Every day after work, I decided to visit one of our schools, from the elementary to school to high school, to see how many masks I can pick up. Each bag represents one day. I want you to look at that. That's one day, one school. So it's been about half school year. That's roughly 800 masks that are in our community because of your mask mandate. Also, while I was going around and looking at it, or looking for masks, I found this. It's two beers and a shot of pineapple schnapps, I'm guessing. And I was wondering, what, how are these teachers being able to smell these alcohol if they're drinking at school? Are they able to at all? Is that being a huge deterrent? Let me see. We all know litter poses a threat to our environment. And I mean, there's plastic in these masks, we all know that. It takes a while to decompose. I've emailed the student council multiple times, asking for them to provide me any evidence that their protocols have made a positive impact. I would like to thank one member that replied back to me and apologize for him having to be the one to deal with my questions through the email. The answer I got, I was directed to what you were saying today, just a guideline. Nothing of saying like, this is, we made this protocol, affected this amount of people getting affected. Nothing like that. From those two unarguable points I made to you, I don't think that it's too much to ask that you show community proof that your mandates have been effective. I find it completely irresponsible that you are unable to. I don't blame these kids for littering all these. I blame you. You're the ones that are forcing them to be muzzled. These kids aren't wanting these mask mandates.
Thank you, Joe. I think that's everybody for this evening. Thank you again for coming forward to share with us this evening. Okay. Now, we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda, and I would just like to call everybody's attention to the fact, if you did not see it in your board packet, that we have an amended agenda this evening. Number one, we've added the request to approve a cooperative sponsorship with Burnsville for badminton. And we've also added a proclamation celebrating National School Counseling Week. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So may.
By Jonathan?
Second.
By Stacy? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That carries 7-0. Next is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. Tonight's consent agenda includes, just to note that financials will be available at the March meeting, the approval of school board minutes for the organizational meeting on January 10, 2022, and the regular board meeting on January 10, 2022, board professional development on January 18, joint school board and legislative meeting on January 24, and the study session on January 24. Personnel items include candidates for employment, as listed in your board packet, resignations and terminations and non-renewals, as listed, and the approval of the Finance Advisory Committee membership that was brought forward at the study session. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
So may.
So by Amy, second?
Second.
Second by Stacy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0. There is no resolution tonight for the acceptance of gifts. So next, we will move on to Laker Pride and Special Recognition in our Laker showcase.
Thank you, Chair Nelson. Again, it's wonderful to see so many people here tonight as we start Laker Pride by recognizing several of our students. So actually, Sam, do you want the students to come up now? Or, all right, students, come on up. I am going to share a little bit of context. And then our Director of Educational Equity and Inclusion, Sam Oak, as well as Assistant Principal from the high school, Mark Paulson, will share some information. So you just kind of come around me, right? The camera's right there, so we want to be sure anybody sees you. Excellent. And Sam, I'll let you, if we have folks, the students introduce themselves later, I'll have you do that. But I just want to share a little bit of context. Last year, our district theme was "We Are PLSAS Voices." And when I think about the importance of student voice in learning and in everything that we do, I know that the work that this group and Sam and Mark have led has been really instrumental. In early November, the Student Advisory Council was formed to represent the diversity of our high school and empower student voices in the work around promoting an inclusive environment where all are welcomed and respected. Mark Paulson and Sam Oak discussed the plan of forming this group back in July with the goal of ensuring that all students have equitable opportunities to share their goals, concerns, and celebration of their school, as well as providing students an opportunity to come together to create a school environment that is inclusive of all. At the moment, the Student Advisory Group includes representation from the following student organizations. The Black Student Union, the Asian Student Alliance, the Muslim Student Association, the Queer Teen Coalition, the Native American Student Coalition, Student Council, and representative members of our student athletes. At this time, before I turn it over to Mark and to Sam, I just want to thank you for the countless meetings that you've been in as you've been planning some pretty spectacular things, and for giving voice to our students in our community, especially over the last couple of months, that have been painful for all of us. And you're helping lead us to a better place. And we want you to know how much we support you, recognize you, and celebrate you every single day. So with that, Mark and Sam, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Mark, I think we'll have you go first here.
Okay.
Well, I'm not sure where to stand or look. So I just wanted to say briefly just about the formation of some of these groups. Since I've been in Prior Lake, there was a very strong Black Student Union that was involved in just many facets of our school, making our community a better place. I don't know if any of you remember, but two summers ago, our Black Student Union was responsible for the single largest food donation ever made to the SCE Food Shelf in Minneapolis. They, literally by tons, and that was the result of our students. And under, I think, their leadership and their example, and I know that Maggie has been leading a group for a number of years as well that's been working to create a safe space for kids and showing through her leadership what students can do. And then this year, we've had just an explosion of student engagement and student leadership stepping up. You know, people oftentimes complain that kids these days don't get involved, don't do anything. And I think what we have up here is a very solid representation of students who are making a difference and not waiting. We have leaderships from all of them. And I'm going to ask the presidents of these groups to step forward. So Janaya for the BSU, Maggie for the Queer Teen Alliance, Coalition, sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, stand right there, yep. Assad for the Muslim Student Association. Is Rowan here tonight? I don't see Rowan. Okay. We have Lindsay Liu for our Asian Student Alliance Association. I am so sorry. I am so sorry. Thank you. Malcolm was one of our student athletes. He wasn't able to be here. I'm trying to think, we have, am I missing anybody? Well, yeah, Student Council representatives have also been joining us to be part of these conversations and support these other groups in the work that they're doing. So I think it's important that we're starting to bring all these organizations together. And then the other students that you see up here are all the executive board members who have been involved. And I just can't tell you, I've been in education for over 20 years, and I've worked with high school students for that entire time. And I have never been more proud, more impressed, more, and overwhelmed by what this group of students has achieved in the amount of time that, you know, they've been organizing and supporting our schools. And I think we're seeing that. If anybody had an opportunity to see the cultural festival, I can honestly say, in the last three years, it was the single most joyful thing I've ever participated in. With everything that's been going on and how hard it's been and the sacrifices people have made, you know, and everything that we're hearing, just to see our students putting something together that was so uplifting and so affirming, and it's because of them. So just wanted to say thank you and introduce the presidents of these groups.
Why don't you come up with in front as well, too? And if the exec boys can just gather behind the presidents here, the presidents of the club. Because the work of the Student Advisory Group is not only done in the Student Advisory Group meeting. A lot of times, the students would take the discussions and the ideas and the plan from the Student Advisory Group and take it back to their group and then get the important work done. They also bring out ideas from their group as well to get accomplished in the Student Advisory Group. And so many great things have been done. Mark has stated some of the activities have been done in the past. The great work continues on as well. This year, they partnered with the Prior Lake Rotary Club to do an anti-racism campaign, which led to the creations of buttons with slogans around anti-racism. The first-ever Martin Luther King Celebration as well was done on January 17. And that brought the whole entire community together. The cities of Savage, Prior Lake, Spring Lake Township, Crater River, the Prior Lake Rotary Club, as well as all the service club, came together to create this wonderful event. So I'm certain that there's just more great things to come. I've only been in the community for six months, and I love seeing all the activities and everything that the students have put together in collaboration with the community. They've also been present at all the coffee and conversation meetings as well to lend their great insights, and they never shy away from speaking their mind and sharing their thoughts. and sharing their ideas with adults and other community members in the room. So I'm so grateful. I've been in two other districts prior to coming to Prior Lake here. And the maturity of our students have just made me so, I'm in awe. I'm in awe of what these students have accomplished and the maturity they have. So at this moment here, maybe we can present the certificate. And please, everyone, give them a round of applause.
For all of you. And I'm sure if anyone needs one for your memory book and all, we'll just make sure you let us know your names if you want one. But we want to be sure that you have this and have it someplace in the high school to represent the amazing work that you do. Thank you.
Do you all have any, do you guys like to say something? A few words?
I hope.
First off, thank you everyone for coming and happy Black History Month. Is this working? I think we could all agree that the work that we do isn't just to showcase what we can do, but also create a better culture for our school. And just with the problems that happened at the beginning of the year, I think it was just an opportunity for all groups to collab and like join like an allyship between all of us. Because we, although we are different clubs and we go through different problems, we are in the same community where we are treated as, you know, the minority in some cases. And just working towards bringing better unity in our school and like bettering our culture, I feel builds the confidence of our members and also students who aren't in this room right now. Because just like the Global Cultural Festival, a lot of students, it was amazing to me to see a lot of students so confident to be on stage and do things like that. And I don't think people really realize how uncommon that is, especially in a community like Prior Lake. So I just want to thank everyone here today as well. And, you know, thank you all for being here and supporting our culture clubs.
Thanks all. Thank you. I just want to thank all the students for making time to come this evening. Welcome to a boardroom full of students. And thank you for the work you're doing. Thank you Sam and Mark also for coordinating tonight. We appreciate all your efforts.
The second part of Laker Pride that I would like to share is an opportunity to recognize and thank our school board members. Minnesota School Board Association has set February 21st through the 25th as School Board Recognition Week in Minnesota as a time to build awareness and understanding of the vital function an elected Board of Education plays in our society. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools celebrates School Board Recognition Week in honor of our school board members for their commitment to our community and its students. I'm going to share a resolution in just a moment, but I want to thank all of you for the time, effort, energy, consideration that you give to provide guidance, direction, and really difficult decision-making to ensure that 9,000 students are successful. So thank you. Michael, our chair, is completing, or she has completed, three years on the school board. Amy, our vice chair and clerk, has completed one year on the school board. Stacy, our treasurer, has completed 11 years on the school board. Julie Bernick, director, has completed one year on the school board. Jonathan Drews, director, has completed three years on the school board. Mary, director, has completed five years on the school board. And Enrique has completed three years on the school board. Bella is serving in her first year on the school board, as well as a student. It is a thankless job at all times, but especially around the last couple of years that you have been serving and serving during a very, very difficult time. So I want to thank you for everything you do for our students, our staff, and for your support of me over the years as well. So the resolution that I would like to share, whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes the importance of public education in our community, and whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools appreciates the vital role played by those individuals who, as elected board members, establish policies to ensure an efficient, effective school system, and whereas school board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools, and whereas school board members are charged with representing our local education interests to state and federal government and ensuring compliance with state and federal law. And whereas school board members selflessly devote their knowledge, time, talents as advocates for schoolchildren. Whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes and salutes the members of the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools Board by proclaiming February 21st through the 25th as School Board Recognition Week. Thank you all very much.
Thank you for that. And thank you to all my colleagues at the table. I know you've put in an exceptional amount of time. Next, we're moving on to personnel items. And at this time, we'll, Jim Quorum, Director of Human Resources, is going to talk to us about the PLSEA 2021 through 2023 Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Yeah, I have four personnel items for you tonight, starting with the first one, which is the PLSEA 2123 contract. On behalf of the district negotiating team and the school board executive team, it's my recommendation that to bring forward this proposed contract settlement between the school board and Prior Lake Savage Education Association. And our recommendation is that it's approved. We've gone over the details in detail in the past, but I have included a financial summary in the board packet.
Thank you. All right. Board approval is requested.
I was just going to make a motion to approve.
Could I have a motion to approve the 2021 through 2023 PLSEA contract?
So made.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Enrique, or Mary, whoever was first, Enrique. I think we can just do this. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? That carries seven zero. Thank you, Jim.
Can I just make a comment?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. I just wanted to thank both negotiating teams. I know it was a long and long process, but I think in the end, it was a very good, fair agreement. So I just want to thank everyone's efforts on both sides and glad we could get it done.
Any other comments?
Ditto's.
Ditto's. Okay, very good, thank you. Next up, Jim, again, additional staffing for the 202122 only licensed staff.
So we're bringing forward a request to add a special education homebound teacher. This would be until the end of the year, just based upon the needs that we have. This is something that we feel is important. Hope that we have someone out there who is willing and able to do that. That'll be the next step, but we're coming forward with this. And this would be, this would be come out of COVID dollars. And so we bring this forward for your consideration.
I'll take a motion in a second, then we can ask questions. Do I have a motion to approve? By Mary, a second?
Okay.
By Julie? Questions or comments for Jim? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries seven zero, thank you. Jim, you are up again with another additional staffing request.
So we bring forward a staffing request. This would be a replacement, but there is a cost to it. So currently, we have a campus supervisor who sits at the front office, in the new office at the high school. And the proposal is, is to change that to a secretarial position and add duties to it. It would be a nine-month position. But there is an additional net increase in the replacement of that position and as listed in the memo. So I bring it forward for your consideration.
And first, we'll take a motion to approve.
So made.
By Jonathan, a second?
Second.
Second by Enrique. Any comments or questions? Mary?
The title supervisor had certain assumptions in it. And when we replace it with the secretary, were there certain job duties or roles, et cetera, that are going to be dramatically changed from the role of supervisor to secretary?
Supervisor. Oh, campus supervisor. No, well, right now, what she's doing, she's acting as the receptionist as part of her duties as the campus supervisor. And what we want to do is to be able to change that to legitimately do what that position is reflecting. So in the past, we didn't have that, right? Because that spot wasn't there at the high school. We have a receptionist here, we have it for community ed, but we don't have a receptionist dedicated position at our largest building with the most employees. And so what we want to do is change that and then allow the front office staff, this person would also be helping with duties in that front office.
Okay, so what I'm asking is, is that the title campus supervisor, I was only the impression that there was also some sort of supervisory skill for in and out students.
Yeah, they're a building supervisor, not a people supervisor.
Okay. So the campus supervisor was never really an overall campus supervisor. It was more or less just a position title. And we're just adding additional duties onto that, is what you're suggesting?
That's correct.
Okay.
Other comments or questions? All right, having a motion and a second on the floor, I will ask all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Next up, we have an annual resolution.
Yep, so every year at this time, we come forward. This is a requirement that we need to do to bring forward and have the board approve a resolution directing us as administration to make recommendations and reductions in programs and positions. So again, an annual resolution. And so please act on it and we'll go from there.
Okay, very good. And again, this does come forward every year. So for the resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore, do I have a motion to approve?
So made.
By Mary, thank you. A second?
Second.
By Enrique? Any comments or questions? Okay, this is a roll call vote then. Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that carries seven zero, thank you. All right. Unfinished business, moving on. Approval of the cooperative sponsorship with Burnsville High School for Girls Badminton. Dr. Bezek, thank you.
Pinch hitting for Jeff this evening. We have a cooperative agreement with Burnsville for badminton. We have had some students express interest in participating in badminton. And Burnsville has an established program and they've been kind enough to offer to help allow our kids to play there to see if the interest grows. And, you know, possibly down the road, we could start our own program. It's an opportunity. It targets a number of kids that are underserved right now. Typically, the kids that usually are playing are a lot of more minority students. And they find that, you know, we found badminton across the state in some of the, you know, some of our neighboring schools to be very popular. And right now, it's just for females and we kind of have a lack of, some of our girls, some opportunities for them. They don't seem to be, you know, joining our basketball and intermural, some of our intermural programs at such a rate. So we're trying to find things that would interest the kids. And this came forward and we thought, hey, let's give this a try. So that's what we're here and that's what we're proposing. I know it didn't get in the packet right away, so I thought we'd come up and see if there's any questions.
I'll just make a comment. I think this is a great idea. I know it's been around at Burnsville and the long-established program. And I'm glad that we have some kids that have interest in it, especially the girls. Because I do know, as you were saying, a lot of times they are kind of left out on the intermural piece. So I think this is a great move forward and hopefully we get enough interest to start our own.
Yeah, that's our hope as well.
Other comments or questions?
Down here.
All right. Board action is requested. Do I have a motion to approve the cooperative sponsorship with Burnsville High School for Girls Badminton?
So made.
Enrique?
Second.
Second by Stacy? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero, thank you, Dr. Bezek.
It'd be the most popular thing I ever brought forward, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have an update on our safe learning plan. Thanks, Kate.
All right, here is our situation update. The outcomes of tonight are to examine our Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' local data and also review our staffing and operations data and review and adjust our mask requirements at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Here is our Scott County case rate data. This actually looks over the entire pandemic. So if we look at the beginning of this school year, we can see that we experienced kind of a spike here in November. And then as the rates were going down in December, we were hopeful, but then kind of experienced a real large surge in January. But our preliminary data suggests that the rate is going down by quite a large rate, almost dropping 100 per 10,000. So we're hopeful that rate will continue to decrease. And if we look at our cases within our school district, we kind of have followed those surges. So we experienced kind of that large surge in November. Our cases were hovering around 50 and then really increased pretty largely in November. And as we started to go down with the holiday break and then experienced that huge surge in January, where we had about 500 cases in two weeks. Thankfully, we are seeing a huge drop in those cases in our students. So we're feeling hopeful about that. Unfortunately, we are seeing kind of a sustained increase in our staff. All right, I'm going to hand it over to Jim to talk about staffing and operations.
Thanks, Kate. Some more good news, I think, or positive. At least it's not going up, but our open positions are leveling off. However, the concern there is that we're still at 60 and almost all of them are support staff. So pares, custodians, food service, like that. And that's been pretty consistent. So I think that there's 60 bodies that we don't have here doing work on any given day or every day. So that's one piece. Overall, daily staff absences, you can see, are going down. So this is the overall staff, that's all employees. But I think the one concerning piece here for me in HR is that the daily subs, and this would be almost all teachers and pares are in this group. So anybody that requests a sub from teachers on call, that's what the bottom is. And you can see what's happening there. Those absence rates the last two weeks have gone pretty quickly upward. You know, we hope that level's off. But when we talk about being able to operate on an operational level, But when we talk about being able to operate on an operational level, along with what Kate said about employee positivity rates or absences still remain high and have been increasing, this would be an example. So these are the, these are the employees that are with kids every day on a daily basis. And so that, that's a concerning sign right there. And we'll see what happens this week. I would say that one of the things that we watch on a regular basis is how many unfilled absences we have. And last week, we averaged about 30, sorry, about 39 absences a day. Sorry, let me back up. About 70 absences per day, pretty regularly throughout the week. And on Friday, we had 95. And we had 27 unfilled teaching sub positions, which is very difficult to be able to handle when you think about all the other open support positions that don't have people working as well. So it's one thing we'll keep an eye on, but that was, Friday was a tough day. And we'll just have to see what the rest of this week brings.
Thanks, Jim.
The next slide, and you saw this before, the slide that Kate showed earlier had both staff and students. And Jim's just spoke a little bit to the staff rates that we've had, where we haven't seen the decrease. We have seen a sharp decrease, again, from where that height of cases were with students. You can see we're still not quite back to where we were at the beginning or right before that November surge, but they're definitely coming down. So the next chart, Kate actually put this together for us, so thank you, Kate. But it shows a more comprehensive summary of the data since the start of the year. And I just want you to note that at the beginning of the school year, COVID cases were relatively low in both students and staff. And then remember, in that first week in November, cases rose from 50 to 102. As a result, the universal masking became the requirement at PLSIS across the entire district. It hadn't been at the high school prior to that. Well, cases did decline slightly in December. Remember, this was over winter break, so some of our data may not be as accurate. Cases rapidly grew again in January. Currently, as I said, we see those cases are decreasing in students, but they remain fairly elevated in staff right now. And just a reminder again, which I know I don't need to remind anybody about, but the reason that we did have to go into distance learning was the staff absences and being unable, as Jim just shared, to fill those positions. And we did just return from distance learning two weeks ago. So I know sometimes that seems like months ago, but it was only two weeks ago. As you all know, our goal from the beginning of the year has been to be in-person learning. So we're going to continue to focus on reviewing the data weekly and making the best decisions we can based on that data as we adjust our plans. So if you go to the next slide, we're going to talk just a little bit about the phased-in approach that I mentioned earlier. So again, there's been a lot of, of conversation, planning around this. And this is where we are landing as, as the plan for moving forward. The first phase would take place, actually, beginning tomorrow, is that Prior Lake Savage area schools would no longer require masks after school hours in our middle schools and our high school buildings. We'd still require masking for all school-sponsored elementary after-school and evening activities for staff and students. Universal masking would continue to be strongly recommended, but not required. Masks are required on all public transportation and that would continue to be the case. So while we wouldn't require our basketball team to be masking when they're in the gym, they would be required to wear masks when they're on a bus traveling to a game. We'll continue to review the COVID case rates, staffing and operational capabilities, our ILI rates, attendance rates, to determine masking requirements as part of those mitigation strategies. Because again, as I said, our goals are to be in-person five days a week. So that's something, that would be that first movement that we would start tomorrow. And then what we'd like to do in Phase Two, you saw last week's data. We saw a decline, a pretty steep decline in Scott County public health rates as well as our student rates. So what we would like to do is, on Thursday, review that data again. If, for a second week in a row, we have a decrease or stable numbers, at that point, we would like to then move to Monday, February 14th, recommending and not requiring masking for all students. So that, and that is E through 12. So again, that would give us two weeks in a row of both county data and our local data, which at this point is very important to us, to show that trend moving forward. We'll continue to monitor on a weekly basis. And we know, just like we saw in November, should we see a spike at such an increase that we saw in November, we could make changes either district-wide or perhaps just at a particular building or just a particular classroom. But that's what that, that second phase would look like. We would, we meet on Thursday, we'd make, review that data to see if those trends continue to decrease as we're anticipating. And then we would communicate an update to staff and families by Friday. If a change were going to be able to take place, we'd begin that Monday, February 14th. The last part of this plan is really taking a look at, at staffing. And right now, with the data that Jim shared, as well as the cases that we still have in staff, we are not comfortable removing masking in staff at this point. And we'll continue to require masks for staff as we move forward. And again, watching that data at a point that the cases decrease and that those absentee fill rates are not at the concern that they currently are. Again, because our goal is to keep students in-person five days a week for the remainder of the year. We'd be happy to take any questions that you have. I do want to, and I heard some of the speakers list some of the other schools. But I do want to remind you that there are several schools that are still requiring masking. Shakopee, Lakeville, Burnsville, Eagan, Savage, Rosemont, Apple Valley, Eagan would be some of those that are, they, they all do still require masking. And I think they're all having conversations, you know, we've been having conversations for the last couple of weeks and want to continue to have the data guide that decision-making. So we're happy to take any questions that you might have.
We'll open up to questions and comments. And I want to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak. So if you have several comments or questions, we may go around the table and then come back again. So who would like to start?
I can go.
Okay, Jonathan.
Jim, a question for you quick about, about staff absences and what's happening there. Are we, have we given any, any consideration to trying, how are we trying to creatively do anything about that? And I'm specifically something, thinking about something I've heard of another district who basically has significantly incented their subs to be there for 20 consecutive days, sort of thing, the Eden Prairie model. Have, have we looked at anything like that to try to help with that? It seems like we could afford to do it with funds we don't have from positions that aren't filled and so on. Have we done anything like that?
Have we?
Considered anything like?
We have not incentivized the day of the week. We did increase the, the daily rate. That was the first step. And I think our intent was to be deliberate about it, move it up so it's sustainable for a long period of time. I don't, I, I'm not sure that, you know, adding $100 for Friday to try to entice that, I don't know how much, I don't know how effective that is to begin with. Ours is more about fill rate. Our fill rate is, I mean, it, it has changed in January, it dropped down into the 30s. But typically, it's pretty consistent no matter what the number of absences are. So that's the gap that we're, oh, I know it doesn't have so much to do with the Safe Learning Plan, but that's the gap that we're trying to pay attention to. Why does our fill rate oftentimes, outside of January, remain consistent no matter what the number of absences is? The other thing that I think that you always have to talk about is there is the, the supply and then there's the demand. And on one day, when you go up 30 absences, the majority of which were for sick child or, or illness of the individual. That's just not something that when people are, when people are planning out their subbing, no matter what district they're in, they already have a sub job for Friday. And then when you add 30 to the mix, we're, we're just out those folks. That's the way I look at it, of being able to pull them in last minute when, when there's illnesses.
Good, okay. You know, regarding the change, obviously, I think it's what we've all been wanting to be able to talk about for a long time and, and be able to do. I feel good about the fact that in the fall, I think we talked about, you know, the availability of vaccines. And that's why we were mask-free at the high school. At that time, I said, we, I think we agreed that the hope would be that when it was available for more students, it would help us to be able to move in that direction. I think we're continuing to follow it, to follow our local numbers and our building numbers. So I hope that that works and we're able to stay that way for the remainder of the year.
Other comments or questions?
I have a comment or a question, actually, Jim, of a couple of comments. But first of all, where do we compare overall to rates with competitive districts for teachers-on-call?
You mean fill rates or?
No, rates, as in hourly rates.
Oh, we're, we're in a, I think we're in a really good spot now when we shared those numbers when we brought that forward. And so it puts us, I think, fairly competitive with most of the districts around us.
Fairly competitive, or how do we, how do we match with the fill rates to other districts?
Oh, fill rates. I'm, I would have to go back and look at my data. We get numbers from teachers-on-call on fill rates and they'll identify school district one, two, three, four, they don't tell us who they are. But we do have some of that data. I just can't speak to it right now, but I'd be happy to find it and share it with you.
I, I think that would be quite telling if we could. I, I have spoken to a few people at other districts and it does concern me, so, but I'd like to see the data first. Don't know how well the verbal relay is or how documented that is. And then the, the other thing is, is that, you know, it, it's been kind of widely known, I believe, according to medical releases, CDC, et cetera, that the N95 masks are superior to the regular mask. So if we require the teachers to be masked, are they going to be given N95 masks?
Yes, we ordered a large shipment about three weeks ago and distributed them two weeks ago. And then MDE last week gave us another order, almost 6,000 KN95 masks for staff.
Okay. And we have a, you know, obviously, we've got people on all sides of the fence, but we also have a fairly vocal majority of parents who are very concerned about lack of masking because of their children's medical or because of their beliefs, et cetera, and not knowing if everyone else in the classroom is vaccinated. And unfortunately, we've heard areas in our own community where if somebody walks in with a mask, they can be subjected to some level of verbal comments. So if we go to a recommended status for masks, how are we going to handle that particular dissension, particularly in a classroom or in the hallway, et cetera, for students?
We talked about this at the beginning of the school year too, knowing that there might be some of that. And we do not tolerate bullying and we would handle it similar to other bullying incidents.
Okay, as long as we're aware of it and we're capable of handling it, that would be good. And then the other thing is, is, you know, there's a lot of districts, and I just, and I don't have an opinion on this because I'm not a medical professional, but I know that like New Jersey, they didn't say, okay, next week, we're going to get rid of masks. They said March something. I think it was March 10th or March 1st or whatever, to make sure the rates go down. What I don't want to do is end up in a ping pong thing where all of a sudden, we pull this, the rates go up, and then we have to tell people, oh, I'm sorry, you have to mask again all day. How are we going to manage that, especially with, you know, we see the numbers drop now, which is fantastic. If they go back up, what do we do? What is our protocol? How, I mean, are we gonna, is there a probability that we're going to jump back into this? Or how's that going to work?
We'll definitely be talking with Scott County Public Health to kind of see what they're forecasting. They are, they did forecast that big surge in January, and then they were forecasting a pretty large drop. I think our hope is that we would have to do it on a case-by-case or building-by-building, building, building, for when we would have to go to masks. Because it, it isn't our hope to continue to have universal masking mandates. It's more to look if we're having a surge in a certain building and kind of treat it as such, and then move out of masking again.
Okay.
Other comments or questions?
I just, I just want to say thank you. I was on incident command the last few times and so many staff giving really good input, really trying to understand the data so we know what we're looking at and understand what's going on in our buildings. I'm cautiously optimistic. I think this will be a good plan. I fully stand behind it. I'd like to see masks become optional for staff. I think we need to understand the impact that COVID is having on our staff absences and if that is in fact really as impactful. And I think we'll know more in a week or two, in a couple of weeks. So thanks for your time and your work.
Other comments or questions? Enrique?
Yeah, thanks. I'd like to echo Mary's comments as well, that I definitely don't want to see the ping-pong effect, so definitely figuring out where that sweet spot is. I know I have some insider knowledge on how things are managed in other areas. Usually, it's seeing a trend, a positive trend, a favorable trend, not so much positive, for two turns, so basically four weeks, is when we would start to make those decisions versus a change this week, go to a meeting, make another change and start trickling things down. So just being very thoughtful, forthright, and making sure that our community is also aware of what's happening and when, so that they can plan for any sort of eventualities. Of course, removing a mask doesn't, it's not like making that transition from in-person to distance or vice versa. It doesn't require as much planning, but still, there's some planning involved there. And I have a question with respect to the masking requirement for elementary that's still in place, but not at middle school or high school. So I'm curious where, why the delineation there for after, after?
Yeah, and the reason that we did that for, for right now is because of the staff. Again, our staffing concerns with kids company. So we wanted to ensure that staff and students who are in after-school kids company programs were both masked right now. So that's why we did the distinction between the, the secondary and the elementary.
Okay. All right, thanks for the clarification.
Yep. Julia or Stacy?
Go ahead. Oh. Yeah, I just want to, I've been in and out of some of these conversations along the way with incident command. And I know, you know, this isn't an easy decision. I think, you know, obviously can be debated on either side. But it is something that I know everyone wants to get to at some point. It's that point is where we all debate, is where is that point? I do, I am encouraged by the, you know, the trend downward. I think, looking forward, you know, being able to react at a building level, to me, and, and being able to react in small, depending on where things are happening and outbreaks and kind of things, seems to make sense to me as far as moving forward. The biggest concern for me is staff. I think that's the reason why we went to, as we said, distance learning, you know, not too long ago, and that those cases are still, you know, fairly high and that that, the fill rate is still a concern. So that will be the thing, I think, again, if there is a concern, it's going to be, that's the first place where we're going to see it again. So I do support keeping masks on right now for, for staff, as hopefully that number comes down. Jim, I did have one question. As far as requests for leave and that kind of thing, the process involved with that. So I mean, I know people get sick, their kids get sick, obviously, that's happening all over the place. But as far as optional, you know, people, I mean, I mean, I know people take vacation or whatever, they have days off and they have to go to the doctor and that kind of thing. Do we have, I mean, is there things that we can do to mitigate the need? I mean, you know what I mean, like Fridays seem to be tough, you know what I mean? I get it, people want to take Fridays off. But like if we know we have this trend, I mean, is there anything, I mean, are we trying to look at things internally, work with teachers, building level, trying to mitigate that? Is there, I guess, you know, as far as putting in the desire for like, you know, like at work, you got to put in it so, so long or so far in advance. Are we looking at changing any of those things or, you know, just to give us a better indicator of days that might be for soft?
Yeah, I mean, we can project as best we can. There are limits around the number of licensed staff that can be out of any given building based upon the size of the building. And that's what we've used as the limits. building. And that's what we've used as the limits. And so you may have five that can have a personal day on any given day in one building, and it might be three in another or seven at the high school. So those are already set. It's when we have this large influx on top of that of usually it's, it's sick leave, either for the individual or, or child dependent leave for illness. So there is some parameters around there now. And anything beyond that would need to be approved, approved by exception. Not sure that answers your question.
No, I just curious about the process and, you know, it's, I get people want to take their vacation when they want to take their vacation or do whatever. But if there's things we can do to encourage to, hey, maybe take your doctor appointment on a Wednesday instead of a Friday, you know what I mean? Like, it's because we know we're going to get hit and these are bad days, or I don't know. I just, to try to mitigate those, those days where we're really low on staff is, you know, just always looking for. Yeah, no, I, you know, I think, I'll say this, I think we pushed when we came back out of distance learning last year. We were wanting to be aggressive, be one of the districts, and we were one of the districts south of the river, the first ones to get back and get our kids back in the district, in, in, you know, hybrid or whatever, and back into that. And I think we're pushing a little now, and I'm glad we are. I think, I know it's risky, but, you know, it's time. I think it's time to, to give it a try. So that's where I'm at.
Yes, I will just add on to some of Stacy's comments, just separating staffing issues are obviously not solely based on COVID. So I want to make sure that as we look at the, the numbers, and I know, I thank you, Kate, and I think everybody, I sit on those meetings as well. It's a lot of analysis and, but I think we need to pay close attention to staffing. I don't think that issue is going to go away tomorrow. It'll probably be here in September, October again. So I think that looking at that on its own, and then looking at the masking adjustment plan, I'm really, really pleased with it. I'm very pleased that there's a sense of urgency attached to this. I know, I think we'll, you know, see these numbers drop. But I do appreciate the urgency. You know, we followed some protocols last fall based on availability of vaccinations that fell into place for five to 11-year-olds in December and January. So people have been given the opportunity to protect themselves that way. And so I'm very pleased and I would encourage the, the urgency. Every day matters, every single day to these kids. One more week with a mask on is one more week. So I'm encouraged by it and thank the other gentleman who told us about the garbage in the parking lot. I mean, there's a lot of ripple effects here. So I want to see those kids faces sooner than later. So I appreciate the hard work and our bold decision-making and appreciate it.
I'll just add as someone who sits in and listens to those incident command meetings every single week, that I'm glad that our district started the year out with a team of people who brought forward data from several data points by, by looking at whether vaccines were available or not. What were the county rates? What were the district rates? What were the building rates? What was the staffing impact? What was the after-school impact? And I think if we had just set one or two factors with a cutoff point, like if the county rate is here, then we're going to make a change. I think we would have been in distance sooner, or perhaps masking at the secondary level sooner. And because we use multiple data points, if the county rates were high and our district rates weren't, we were able to proceed. So I, it's a complicated way to do it, but it's an important way to do it. I'm confident that we used sound data every single week. So I know I've had a few emails that say you guys don't really even look at the data. That's, they are some long meetings every single week where this is, data is presented and discussed. I feel very confident about how it helped us make decisions so far, and I feel confident that it's helped us making decisions that we can start to remove certain mitigation factors. I will expect we'll continue to lean on that data going forward. So if we do get an indicator that there's an outbreak at a school or we need to reintroduce a mitigation factor somewhere, again, let's use what's worked so far. And that incident command will continue to meet for the, at least near future. Hopefully, we won't need it forever. To monitor that data, to bring us those updates and make sure that we're, we're making the best decisions possible. I, I believe the data served us well, and I think it's serving us now as we make these decisions to go forward. And I just, a thank you to everybody who has continued to be relentless in bringing forward that data, to enter in some really hard discussions every single week about how to weigh that data. And I'm looking forward to walking the buildings and seeing some faces myself. That's one of our favorite things to do as board members, is, is be in the building. So we'll do our best and, and hope the numbers continue to go down and knowing that we may have to be flexible in the future. So thank you, Kate and team.
Can I just make two more comments?
Please do.
Um, three. First of all, thanks to the team that continues to provide data and wide counsel. The second thing I just want to speak to, just to make sure that, that, again, I don't have the data in front of me either, but I'm in almost daily conversations with superintendents across the metro. And the conversation is about nobody can get subs. So the fill rates, well, again, I don't have the, the data in front of me. I know it's a struggle that every single district has. And I also want to take this opportunity to remind all of us that, you know, I know there are people who are critical because we had to go into distance learning, and there have been other districts that haven't had to. And there's a lot of reasons for that. And I want to remind all of us that, again, we're going to hear a little bit from Julie in a minute about our budget. And we've heard a number of times, we educate our students in private, like savage area schools for approximately $2,000 less than the average seven-county metro. That means we have fewer staff. So we have fewer people to fill in and help, and whether it's interventionist or it's, you know, more teachers, or more paraprofessionals, or more specialists, we have fewer people that can help with that. So I, I just think there's so many complexities and every single school district is so different that we just have to be really cautious about, you know, thinking somebody else's plan is perfect or, or they're doing it better because everyone is struggling with this pandemic and, and certainly doing the best they can with what they have and, and the situation they have in front of them. So I just wanted to share that. Thanks.
Okay. Michael, if I could just follow up. I know that, you know, staffing is a, is an issue and it's, may not be 100% due to COVID. So it would be nice, Jim, if just as a, as an note, if we did know our comparative percentage absence rates to other districts as well as fill rates and stuff like that, to make sure that we are taking the appropriate action on that area. So we don't have to go back into a situation where we're in distance learning because of lack of staff.
Okay.
All, all things that we are looking at, considering, studying, advertising for, and we'll, we'll continue to do that.
And for the listening public, we would love for you to apply for some of those positions in our school district and hang out and spend some time with kids. It'd be fantastic.
Thank you. And I know from meetings through AMSD, MSBA, several others, other districts are struggling with this as well. And we recently heard from our state demographer, and it's not just COVID impacting our, our staffing issues here and across the state. So it's a perfect storm right now, and, and my thanks for all the things you are doing to manage. And I understand we have district administrative staff often filling in as well in the buildings to keep those buildings open. So thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, then I think we will, thank you for that report, Kate and Jim and Dr. Stallow. We will move on to the Circle of Friends preschool rates. Erin, is that you? Okay, great.
Good evening, Dr. Stallow, my board member, Michael Nelson and board members. I'm actually excited to be here because I'm talking about next year.
Yeah.
Nice change for all of you. We recently did a comprehensive study of our tuition, and we really would, would like to propose increasing our rates for our half-day programming. And the reason why that is, we did not raise rates last year. We raised, we increased our days. So really took into consideration the pandemic, but we're a fee-based program. And so we'd like to propose increasing to our half-day classes. That would increase it from a $21 a day rate to $23.50. So we want to increase it by $2.50. And that's to help offset the costs of the program and to keep us fiscally responsible with statutory mandates. And I am going to promote that we have our early learning open house tomorrow night. So anyone that wants to come to that can come. And we open up our registration and we're adding some new classes in for families. So we're excited about what we have to offer right now.
And those are always fun events. Questions or comments?
I just have one question. Now, I know we didn't raise them last year and the year before that, we had a slight increase, if I remember correctly. Where are we in terms of, of making sure the program stays solvent, given inflation and all that kind of other factors?
I, I think it's something we have to look at every year. We have to be fiscally responsible. Last year, we added 20 days, so that increased it for the families. This time, we are increasing it by $2.50 a day. So that's still bringing us up. We might have to increase again in the future. But what we're really looking at is, we're in the middle of where we are with our member districts surrounding us. So we're trying to stay, keep it affordable for families and make sure we're offering a product that meets their needs.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Okay. And I, I know in the materials you provided us, you, you talked about sort of a comparison that you did to other districts that was a range between 2087 and 3360. So to go up to 2350 seems to keep us really in a good range there. Thank you for that. Okay, board action is required for this, this evening. Can I have a motion to approve the Circle of Friends preschool rates?
Join.
By Stacy. A second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Erin.
Thanks, Erin.
Okay, next is 2022, 23 enrollment update. Sorry, Julie. Julie, sync director of business services.
Good evening, Chair Nelson, Dr. Stallow, board members. Just a couple of updates from our meeting just two weeks ago. We are continuing with enrollment for our kindergarteners. It is a little slow. We are about 20 students behind where we were at this same time last year. If we were to compare us for two years ago, we're 60 students behind. And so we really want our parents to look at our programs, see all the exciting things that we have to offer, and enroll in our district. And so, so that we can have our staffing and set that all up for this year as part of our budget process. And so we'll continue to monitor our enrollment and review that as we move forward. And it does fluctuate, just depends on how busy people are and everything that's happening in their lives. But we will continue to nudge our parents to get their enrollments in for our kindergarten classes.
Comments or questions on enrollment? All right, then we'll keep you up here then for a budget update. Thank you.
And really, we are continuing to work on our budget. There really isn't anything new from the presentation, from the work session in January. We do, at this time of the year, we're looking at our middle school and high school registrations. And so that helps us with our enrollment in those areas as well. And so we'll be reviewing that to see what we have for those offerings and the number of students. And we'll be bringing back more information at the end of this month and the next several months concerning our budget. And as we continue to monitor the legislative process and all of those factors that will have an effect on our budget.
Okay. Amy or Julie?
So just, so when we look at the budget again, I'll include the, the contract that was approved today.
That currently is in.
Yeah, okay.
And it'll be in future years, yes, definitely.
Yeah, the impact. Cool. That's what I want to know.
Other comments or questions?
I know one question I have is we're continually trying to monitor where we are with our fund balance and, you know, the established board rate where we have to keep that set. And when we come forward at the next meeting, school finance is so complicated, I know it. But is there a way to look at a couple of different scenarios if, if with a special session, you know, we make this assumption, here's where we're going to be in terms of that percentage? If, if it doesn't happen, or, or any other staffing issues, you know? Is there a way to look at that? And could we look at it, say, you know, two to three years out? Because what I want to know is coming in, if, if we're going to have to start thinking proactively about any budget reductions, so that we don't keep kicking the can down the road, is what I worry about. But I also, I know it's hard. That's why I'm saying maybe a couple of different scenarios because your magic wand works magic, but you can't always be predicting everything exactly how it will turn out.
We have a lot of data to gather right now.
Okay.
So we're still doing that work. As soon as we have that information, I think we'll be able to bring you some of that information that you're looking for.
Okay.
Right now, we're still in that data gathering. And so it would be a little premature for future years to know exactly. But as we work through that process, we will be bringing that, definitely bringing that to you for your review to see what kinds of things. And it'll, of course, be brought to our finance or our
Sure.
FLIR committees first. So we'll go through that process there.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not like looking at three years out. Oops. We have very little left. And so I just kind of want to have that sense.
I think there's a lot of districts right now that, that is an issue. And that's why every school district in the state is looking for additional funding from the surplus that is out there because we are, have had loss of students. We had had one-time funding to help us. But as you know, we continue to have costs that we haven't anticipated. Rate, you know, things are going up, interest rates are going to be going up. So that means, you know, everything will be changing again. So we'll be, we are monitoring all of those items all the time and trying to make sure that we're bringing forward the best information we can. Right now, we need the data from the high school. We need the data from the middle school. We need those things in order to put together a really solid base budget for all of those items to look at.
Okay.
So we're kind of on hold a little bit with that, but we're continuing to work with curriculum. We're continuing to work with all those other areas.
Great, thank you. And that's what I was going to add. This is also the time of the year that both as senior leaders and when we're meeting with principals right now for their mid-years, we're asking those questions about needs. And it's very hard because we talk about what people need when we know that we don't have the funds for it. But right now, we're having people share with us. So we're hearing some of those needs, especially around social, emotional learning supports in our schools, as well as other academic supports, as well as some things like crisis management and some of those things. So then it becomes this prioritizing, number one, if we add anything, what's that mean? Number two, if we have needs and different priorities, then what else changes if some of those priorities come to the surface? So those are some of the conversations that we're having right now that are just really hard conversations.
Yeah.
Because there's, you know, our students need a lot of things right now. And I understand when principals are saying we need more support for social, emotional learning needs, whether that's counselors or deans or what that looks like. And difficult to add when, when we don't have some of the enrollment, some of the budget factors that we have. So.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And just so everybody knows who's listening, that one of the things school board members do is they advocate to their legislators. Right now, there is a surplus. I also invite the community to reach out to your representatives and advocate for the needs for the school district. So thank you, Julie. Okay. Next up is the Congressional IDEA Full Funding Act Resolution. And we did discuss this at the study session, and it is available in your packet. And I won't make you, make you listen to me reread it all, but it is a resolution in support of the Congressional IDEA Full Funding Act HR 5984 and S dot 3213. Basically, we're looking to get that full funding for our special education. And we did discuss it. We have been asked by MSBA to consider it as a resolution, to give it board approval. And if so, to pass it on both to our legislators and to MSBA for a collective packet. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution in support of the Congressional IDEA Fund Full Funding Act?
Come here.
Thank you. By Enrique, a second?
Second.
A second. Amy, thank you. Any comments or questions? Okay, this is a resolution. So we will take a roll call vote. Jonathan?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Mary? Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Aye. And that passes 7-0. We will make, work with the legislative committee to get that forwarded on. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have the National School Counseling Week proclamation, and Vice Chair Amy Crosby will read that for us.
Whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential. And whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school.
You can just hereby proclaim.
We will hereby proclaim February 7th through 11th, 2022, as National School Counseling Week.
Great, thank you.
Thank you to our school counselors.
Thank you. If, now is a great time. If you haven't already, reach out and thank your counselors. I can't imagine a time where they have felt more weight and more burden and more responsibility for taking care of our kids. Jonathan?
And I would just like to add a personal, whereas a counselor at Prior Lake High School has been an important part of my family's life
Yep.
This year, one additional echo of appreciation for the work that they do.
Yep. We've also been greatly served by the counselors in our family as well. So, I encourage everybody to reach out and just take a moment to thank your counselor or counselors at your school buildings. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to policy. We have two policies that are technically a first reading, but we did bring them forward at the study session. Policy 721 Uniform Guide guidance policy and policy 213 School Board Committees. We did discuss this at the last session. Are there any other comments or questions at this reading to be, that you want to bring up? Okay, those will come forward again then at our study session. There are no second reading of policies at this time. And then, we do have several policies up for approval. I will read through them. We have discussed these several times now. They've come to all the readings. Is there any that still need a comment or question before I ask for a motion?
We're going to take them all at once.
I would like to take them all at once if you guys are interested in that.
Yep.
So, what we would do is I'll be taking a motion to see if we can approve Policy 404, Policy 406, Policy 426, Policy 427, Policy 428, Policy 707, Policy 708, 709, 803, 804, and 810 in one motion. Do I have a motion to approve the policies as listed?
So may.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
On favor of approving the policy, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that carries 7-0. Thank you. That was an efficient way to do that. Next up, superintendent report.
Excellent. Thank you very much. At Prior Lake Savage area schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. And tonight, I'd like to share some information that pertains to making sure that mission comes to life for each of our kids. So, I didn't add this after our conversation. It really was part of my original report. But I did want to talk just a little about the staffing shortage. As you know, employers through the state continue to struggle with our staff, with staffing shortages, and our district is no exception to that. Currently, as you heard Jim say, there are 60 full and part-time positions open with a range of opportunities, including paraprofessionals, custodial maintenance, child nutrition services, and substitutes topping the most needed positions. We're doing everything we can to encourage folks to apply for those positions and look at our positions and learn more about our school district and an opportunity to serve our community right here. So, on our website, join our team, there's a button. And really would love for people to take a look at those and see that there might be, you know, even if it's a part-time that somebody might want to do, it would be really amazing and you'll love being in our schools. I also wanted to share, and I'm sorry if I'm going to steal the thunder from any of the board members, but we did have several of us that sat in at the AMSD meeting last Friday. And I wanted to just share a little bit about the Minnesota State Demographer. Dr. Susan Brower shared an overview of the 2020 U.S. Census results. So, I just wanted to share a few of those highlights that I noted. Minnesota led the nation in responding to the census at 75% compared to the United States self-response rate of 67%. Our state's population grew by 7.6% between 2010 and 20, and 2020, sorry. Of Minnesota counties, Scott County held the second-largest population gains at 16% just behind Carver County, which was in the number one spot at 17% population growth over those 10 years. Again, of Minnesota cities, Savage ranked 15th in highest in growth with an added population of 5,554. People in Prior Lake came in at 18th highest with an additional population of 4,821. While this growth is good, it was also important that the demographer noted that we don't, we know it hasn't always translated to student enrollment growth. This is largely due to the age of residents moving here as well as other school options. Minnesota's population is predominantly white at 76%. Residents belonging to BIPOC groups are growing and represent 24% of the state population. And then that job theme again, there are 206,000 job openings in Minnesota in early 2021 and only 124,000 people actively looking for work. So, I'll just repeat that. There are 2,000, and there are 206,000 job openings and 124,000 people actively looking for work. The census also revealed a declining work age population as more baby boomers enter retirement. So, unless there's changes in migration, the workforce shortages are expected to continue in the coming years. Not the news we were hoping for. I wanted to highlight the next Community Coffee and Conversations, which will be held Thursday, February 17th, from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock at Twin Oaks Middle School Media Center. This month's topic will focus on the virtues we all share across race, culture, ethnicity, and beliefs as we come together to embrace and celebrate the differences and similarities. This monthly race and equity discussion continues to be held in partnership with the cities of Savage, Prior Lake, and Credit River, along with Spring Lake Township. The Prior Lake Rotary Club is hosting a Humanize My Hoodie documentary screening and discussion. Participants will learn how a local movement uses fashion activism to challenge perceptions associated with Black, Indigenous, and people of color. So, Seema Patino will be leading that conversation. It's free and open to the public, February 24th at 6:30 PM at Shepherd of the Lake Church. And I also wanted to remind everyone that February 21st at 7:30 AM, we will be gathering to celebrate our Prior Lake Savage area school Teachers of the Year, sponsored by the Prior Lake Savage Education Association. Again, that's 7:30 AM at Prior Lake High School on February 21st. Thank you.
Any administrative reports this evening? Board reports? The updates?
I'm not going to say much. I was at AMSD. It was very interesting. I was going to say, we should see. I don't, I was trying to find if we have the meeting materials to send. But if anyone wants that, just let me know.
Yeah, we can forward them to the board.
It was interesting, her whole presentation.
The demographer?
Yeah.
Yep.
So, I mean, last time, they estimated us going flat and then going negative by 2025 for 18 and younger, based on the 30-year birth cycle. And then, they reemphasized that in the 19th for the state and the shortages. Did they make it worse or better compared to what they had estimated before the census?
Are you saying as a whole, the state?
Yeah.
It, I think they said it's basically going to be flat for the most part. I mean, they think they're, that, you know...
For 18 and younger too?
I don't know about 18 and younger. She didn't say specifically on 18 and younger. But I think overall, she just said the state, you know, seems to be in the flat. I think, actually, now that you say that, I think it was, she was talking about student population. I don't know. You'll have to look. I mean, there's 50 slides.
Yeah, turn the data forward.
So, that's why it's easier just to send the slides. But it was really interesting. I just think it's good conversation. And like Dr. Stallow said, there's, you know, growth doesn't necessarily mean growth for your district. You know, you have to know your own, you know, your own area and things like that. But, and then really hit home was the job. That there's just not going to be, there's going to be a lot of job openings for a long time. The age of the baby boomers, they turn six, the youngest ones turn 65 in 2029. And just how that's affecting everything in dollars and tax dollars moving forward. So, and needs for the community. So, it was, it's very interesting. So, I would encourage you to look at it.
All right. And anyone else before Bella? Bella?
Hello. So, I'll touch on the Student Advisory Group a little bit. I know we already saw us all and heard about a few things we've been working on. But the MLK breakfast was so successful. That was one of the first events, other than the coffee and conversations. We had prayers from different religious leaders in the area. We had a breakfast with multiple different cultural foods. And I know that was really fun for everyone to try. We had a student dance. That was our Asian Student Association did a cultural coconut dance. And then additionally, we, the BSU, ASA, MSA, and Power hosted, and this was talked about as well, but the Culture Festival, which was, for anyone who went, I wasn't able to be there. But I've heard it was just incredible. And I know those organizations are also working on another event similar coming up soon. And then, we're also working with Jordan and Shakpe to host another caring and committed conversation at Prior Lake this time. I want to say it was like two months ago that we met with Jordan at Jordan High School. And we broke out into our little groups. And it was really interesting and insightful to just talk to everyone and brainstorm, come up with ideas, to fix things and inequities that are going on in our district. On a student council note, this month, student council is partnering with NHS to work for Teens for Jeans, which is an organization that collects jeans for youth in homeless shelters. And then, next month, we are very, very excited. We are partnering with a student-founded nonprofit called Sonia's Hope for Children. And we're hosting an event called Bowling for Hunger. So, this event raises money for at-risk members of our community. And an anonymous donor is matching every single donation made at this event. It is open to public. It's going to be at Bolero on Sunday, March 13th. There is an application, or not application, there is a sign-up link live, and it is on social media at the PL Stugco Twitter, Instagram. And hopefully, we'll have it posted to more locations soon. Everyone's asked to bring one non-perishable food item if anyone does plan on attending, which will additionally be donated to the local food shelves. So, we're very excited about that to help out a student-founded nonprofit. I believe she might have been recognized at a Laker pride last year, maybe. I'm not for sure.
Sonia Pirani.
And I've seen her Written up in newspapers Yep. And everything else, too.
Yeah. So, we're very excited to partner with her and her family. So, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will just echo, again, the opportunity to take for free the Humanize My Hoodie session facilitated by Seema on the 28th. I have participated in that. It is a fabulous program and the opportunity to take it, sponsored by somebody else. It's hard to pass up. So, I just recommend.
On the 24th.
I mean, on the 24th, I apologize. Thank you. I'm getting close to the end of the agenda there. Okay. Future events as listed. February 21st, there is no school for President's Day, and that is staff in service. February 28th is School Board Professional Development here at DSC at 5 o'clock PM, and then followed by our School Board Study Session at 6 o'clock PM. In a moment, I'm going to take a motion. We will be going into closed session. Closed session is, the meeting will be closed in accordance with the open meeting law, Minnesota Statute 13D.03, for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategy. So, could I have a motion to adjourn this part of the meeting?
So may.
Jonathan, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That passes 7-0. Let's take about a two-minute break and we'll come back in. Thank you, Mike. Well, thank you.